This conference will now be recorded.
Today is Wednesday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic, to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, may I have a real call?
Councilmember Fox. Present. Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you. Consent agenda, if there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
So, do we have an opposition?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do it this way, counsel. We'll go ahead and take a real call vote, please. We're gonna have a real call vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle.
No.
Councilmember Strobin.
Yes.
Councilmember Servini.
Yes.
And also, Councilmember Fox, could you please repeat your, are you?
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize, I understand now. Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor, there are comments.
Do you read them?
From Dennis Hill, one-three-one-six, Wes Alder Place. Greetings, Mayor, City Council, and La Center citizens. First, I want to thank Matt Jenkins for the outstanding job he has done for our city and its citizens, and wish him the very best in his new role with the county. Secondly, I want to thank Sarah Dollar for the outstanding job she has done in Public Works and for our citizens, and also wish her the very best in her new job with the county. She and Matt will be missed by all. I want to thank Administrative Police Chief Bob Richardson for obtaining a replacement for our obsolete, outdated, broken, portable, speed-controlled trailer. Our police department already has it in operation, and I have seen it at work on Aspen Avenue. I am sure it will be used throughout the city to help reduce driving speeds and keep our city a little safer. I know the chief has been working hard for several months to obtain this new piece of equipment and put it in service again. Thank you. At our last city council meeting on Wednesday, January twelfth, I was surprised when several of our council members, old and new, hinted that they had had some discussions on city manners amongst themselves outside of formal city council sessions. I could tell there were others on the live video conference that were also surprised. It is my understanding that this is a direct violation of the State Open Public Meeting Act. I am sure there are a number of topics that the new council members will want to bring up and discuss with council, and as such, and I believe they need to conduct these discussions at publicly noted city council meeting, where a quorum will be present as well as the public at large. I had several questions also when I was a new council member, so I am not surprised that they have questions they want answered to. I would suggest that they speak with the mayor on how to make all this happen within the guidelines of state law. I know you will find the mayor to be a great resource, and I know he would be glad to help you in this regard. I have experienced this firsthand. Again, I want to encourage our mayor and Administrative Police Chief Bob Richardson to continue work with the Clark County Sheriff on putting an agreement together to provide La Center with police protection. This is an important matter, and I believe each council member needs to be working hard to make this happen. The safety of our community should be one of the most important two thousand and twenty-two tasks for city council. Thank you and be safe. Respectfully submitted, Dennis Hill. The next public comment is by Jake Davis, one-five-two-four, Wes Alder Place. I was pleased to see at the workshop last night a path forward for a relationship between La Center and the CCSO. The council has been working towards this goal for almost a year. At the same time, I appreciate the council's attempt to respond to many constituents' desire to field a fully-staffed La Center Police Department. While this is a worthy objective, unfortunately, at this time and for the foreseeable future, it is unrealistic. The reasons for this were capable and clearly set forth by Chief Richardson, Jeff Swanson, John Horst, and Janice Corbin. While some have agreed that we should not make a decision now, but wait until we see what the future brings, we do not have that luxury. The CCSO has admitted that hiring qualified, and I stress the word qualified, candidates has been very difficult and expensive. Does anyone honestly believe that a qualified candidate would be more attracted to La Center with its lack of opportunity for advancement than the CCSO? As explained last night, past experiences have shown that even if we are successful in hiring and getting a candidate through training, they soon move on, leaving us with no return on our investment. The CCSO has much deeper bench and will better able to cover vacancies when officers go on, militarily leave, take vacation or sick leave. And the idea that La Center can support the kind of coverage we need at the cost than more or equal to what the CCSO can provide is just nonsense. We can continue to pursue this idea while we burn through our rapidly depleting reserves until we are bankrupt or the council can wisely accept the fact that our police department is just not feasible from a fiscal standpoint. Yes, the money is important, is an important factor, but of primary concern is reliability and responsive law enforcement for the safety of La Center. The CCSO will be able to provide this coverage far faster than the city can on its own. That's what our citizens want, expect, and deserve. While they risk disappointing those who insist on a La Center Police Department, I ask this council to have the courage to face reality, do what is in the best interest of our community, and move forward with an agreement with the CCSO. Let's get this done. Thank you. That is the end of the public comments.
Thank you, Clerk. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I just have a couple of items I want to share with the council this evening. First of all, the city council will be having a city council retreat next Wednesday at six P M. And we also have a city council work session on February ninth at five-thirty P M before the city council meeting. So just to make the council members aware that we will be having both a retreat on next Wednesday and a work session before the city council meeting. Also, just a reminder that tomorrow, A W C City Action Days will be a virtual meeting. So if any council members have signed up for that, remember that it starts tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. And the only other notice I want to share with the council this evening is that, as of right now, the city will begin moving into the new city hall starting next Wednesday and Thursday. So we'll be starting with Administrative Services and Finance, and they will begin moving into the new city hall next Wednesday. As of right now. Well, that's all I have to share with the council for this evening. Next on the agenda is the attorney's report. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and good evening to council members and the public as well. Just a couple of things. Last Wednesday, we had a Open Public Meetings Act training with council members. The training went a little over an hour, but I hope it was useful to the council members. And I think that we will have additional trainings coming up here in the next couple of weeks. On January twenty-first, there was a hearing in the Clark County Superior Court on the Riverside Estates receivership proceeding. That hearing was related to the proposal to sell the Phase Four Park property and certain tracts in the Riverside Estates subdivision to the city free and clear of any lanes. Unfortunately, there was a very late filing in the case, and the court continued the hearing until February eleventh. So that is all that I have to report tonight, Mayor. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney this evening, counsel? After hearing done, we will continue to move on. Next on the agenda are council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Fox.
Yes, hi, good evening. I don't really have much to say, but I'm happy to be here, and I'm, I know that the police, you know, decision is a big one, and I think that it's not going to be easy for any of us because it really, there is no clear choice, even though it seems like there's a clear choice. But, you know, I'm hoping that we can all put our heads together and find a good solution. So look forward to upcoming meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I've just echoed what Councilmember Fox said. I don't have anything else to add, but I do really look forward to the upcoming work sessions and meetings.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot myself. I would do have a question. I don't know if this is the proper time to ask it, but to, if we want to propose items to be put on the agenda or discussed in a certain work session, how do, how do we go about that?
We can have that discussion under New Business on the agenda. So if you want to discuss any items that you'd like to be placed on the agenda, we can do it that way. Ross, do you have anything to add to that? Is that the best place to do it, or?
Yeah, Mayor, I have addressed this issue in a couple of emails. The, the proper procedure to, if a council member wishes to have an item or an issue discussed on a council agenda, the correct procedure to do that would be during the council member's report to the council, identify the issue that you want the council to consider, see if there's a support for that by a quorum or a majority of the council members, and then it would be placed on a future agenda. So the consideration of future agenda items, the discussion of that should be done in an open public meeting. And council members have a place on the agenda where they can bring up any issue that they want, suggest that something should be considered by the council in a future meeting, and see if there is support for that or not. That is how you should proceed.
That should take place right now during the council comments. Ross, if I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said, Councilmember Boyle, do you have something that you want to, suggest we have included on the, which your agenda?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we could maybe do an overview of going over our current consultants' contracts.
Are there council members want to comment on that?
I would second that with Mr. or Councilmember Boyle.
The other council members.
I think it would be nice to look at a blueprint and look at some comparisons and have some discussions, definitely.
I have never seen some of them, so, or any of them, so I would, I wouldn't mind looking at them and reading them.
Well, there's quite a list of contracts that are, we use for consultants for many different purposes in the city. Does the council want to look at all the contracts? Do you want specific contracts looked at?
I think if we were provided with a list, we could kind of maybe sort out the maybe major ones that I think are of, you know, topics to, that maybe need to be discussed or looked into.
Haven't we had these conversations in the past in our council work sessions? Or strategic planning sessions?
Okay.
Kind of sounds like these might be able to be handled in an email.
What would be handled in the email?
The list of contracts to view, and then select the ones that council members are interested in talking about.
How about if we prepare the list, we can bring it forward at the next city council meeting, and at that time, the council members can go through the list and pick the ones that they want to do, and then we'll get them scheduled for a future council meeting. Will that work?
Yeah, Mayor, I would suggest that that is the better path forward as opposed to trying to do this through a email discussion that's not subject to open public meeting.
Okay. Would that be acceptable to the council?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll prepare that list, we'll bring it forward the next city council meeting, and then after review, we can pull the contracts that the city council wants to review.
Thank you, Mayor.
But, anything else, Councilmember Boyle?
That is it.
Very good. Councilmember Strobin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, it was implied that we may have broken the Open Public Meetings Act. I've inquired with M R S C and have found that we've not broken any laws pertaining to it. Transparency has been a very integral part of my time on the council, and because of that, I will be posting the email and questions so that the public can see for themselves. As always, I welcome public comments and questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Strobin?
No, that, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Servini.
I have no comments this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports. Their first staff report will be presented by Interpol Police Chief Bob Richardson. Chief?
Come on board there. Here we go. Good evening, Mayor, and City Council and community. This is just a review of this December twenty-twenty-one crime, reported crimes. In addition to that, in the back, I did a year-end summary of twenty-twenty versus twenty-twenty-one. So you have the opportunity to just go through and look at all that information. I'm not going to cover all of that because it's rather lengthy, and I know you guys have got a lot of business to do, and it's going to be late sometime. So anyway, we had three reported crimes in December of twenty-twenty-one. We had one shoplift, one arson, which was over in the bathroom at the community center, where somebody lit paper, burned paper in the sink, and one fraud. And again, the next page is just the location and kind of what the fraud was, and also what the shoplifter took in the mini mart as far as taking alcohol. And we had three arrests in twenty-twenty-one December, one warrant, one suspended license, and one drunk driver. Calls for service in December twenty-twenty-one. If you look at officer-initiated activity, it's been pretty consistent for the entire three-thirds of the year because of staffing, so that's why you see the numbers the way they are. Included in that obviously is community-initiated activity is included, and it's been pretty consistent. Around a hundred, it probably averages out to a little over a hundred. So that's a good thing, and then obviously, we have the total number of calls in December. I'm going to move on to the next one, and this is just comparison of December of twenty-twenty with December of twenty-twenty-one. And as you would expect, twenty-twenty, we had a lot more initiated activity by our police officers. We had more community-initiated activity, and that has dropped in December of twenty-twenty-one. And total calls for service obviously have dropped significantly from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. And then the next page after that, folks, is just the number of written reports and by source. And as you can see, we took twenty-seven total reports in December twenty-twenty-one. And out of that total number, twenty-one were initiated by the community, and six were initiated by police officers. And when I count reports, a lot of times for the police officers, they're writing supplemental reports to original reports that were taken previously in the year. End of summary for twenty-twenty-one, if you look at that, and it's what I've been telling you all, all year, is twenty-twenty was a much greater increase in property crimes, including auto thefts and thefts from vehicle, and a substantial decrease in crimes against persons, specifically in the area of assaults and domestic violence assaults. Part of the decrease in crimes in twenty-twenty-one was a change in the law, especially when it comes to drug cases. And that you can see in parentheses, if you back out the drug cases, we had a total of a hundred and fifty-five crimes reported in twenty-twenty versus a hundred and forty-three in twenty-twenty-one. And again, that's just, so everybody knows, again, an increase in property crimes and a decrease in crimes against persons. One thing that is significant, I believe the council needs to know, that Richfield arrested an auto theft suspect. I think I've told you this in the prior council meeting. That person was arrested on December second. They made bail. It's end of December, and we know they live just outside the city, and we've been keeping our eye on that individual. And since December second, we have had no auto thefts. And we've only had one catalytic converter theft since December second. So we can't prove obviously that one person's involved in all those, but I think it does make a significant impact in a small community when you can take people and get them into the system, to get them prosecuted for these stuffs.
Chief, real quick on the end of the year summary, can you explain to me the, the domestic violence is, where is that tied into this list? And is that part of the aggravated, aggravated assaults or intimidation? What would that be?
It would be a combination of both, and most of, most of those twenty-three assaults in twenty-twenty were D V-related assaults.
Okay.
And so, and the other side of the equation you can look at too, and is to look at arrest, because if you look at arrest for the end of the year, that will also tell you what kind of, that's two pages. So if you go to page nine, and you look at total arrests, and if you look at simple assaults, in twenty-twenty, we made nineteen arrests. My guess is probably ninety-nine point nine percent of those were D V-related assaults, and in twenty-twenty-one, we only made three. So that's your domestic violence that's driving that number. And again, I think the reason is, and I'm just speculating here, is remember in twenty-twenty, everybody's locked up together, and we had, everybody was having an increase in domestic violence calls. And then in twenty-twenty-one, people got to go back to work for a while, and I think that's probably helped quite a bit that people were out of the house and cooped up together. And the other big number on the arrest, obviously, that's a big indicator. Twenty-twenty, we'd made nineteen drug and narcotics violation arrests, and we only made one in twenty-twenty-one. And there are going to be some changes hopefully in the legislation in twenty-twenty-one probably we can, we can try to get more cases referred to the prosecutor's office. Because remember, I missed just drug possession now, suspects get three referrals by the police, and then the prosecutor can add additional referrals before you can arrest them. So that's just something that impacts all of us. And then I'm going to skip the rest of it unless somebody has a specific question. But I did do analysis on drunk driving arrests, total traffic accidents reported, the number of cases that were prosecuted or filed in the Battle Round Municipal Court, and it goes on and on about calls for service and those kinds of things. At the very end is my, obviously, my community messaging, which is generally the same thing this time of year. But again, we've been lucky and we've been fortunate, so keep your cars locked and don't leave your keys in your car when it's in your driveway, and take your valuables when you can. We've had a lot of complaints about barking dogs again, so please remember if your dog's barking, especially late at night. For some reason, a lot of people put their dog out by itself, and they bark, and then the police get called. And finally, there were some interesting articles I put in here about Apple AirTags and how people are using them to stalk victims, and there are several different articles you can read in there, and also what you can do to prevent that. That's been in the news recently. And we've had our radar trailers deployed, and we've been moving it around, so you will see that. It's a much nicer, much more reliable, and a much more, much smaller footprint. So that's all I have unless somebody has a question. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Well, the next staff report we have this evening will be the finance staff report, and Marius will be presenting that report this evening. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor Thornton and City Council. Tonight, I bring you the January Finance Staff Report. The December sales tax disbursement was sixty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars compared to seventy-two thousand ninety-three in twenty-twenty. So probably starting to see that downward trend. Senior Accountant Riley Barbera attended the twenty-sixth Annual Governmental Gap Update, which was sponsored by the Government Finance Officers Association. And Chief Richardson and I have been attending the La Center United Coalition meetings. I also will continue to serve on the Clark County Public Health Advisory Council this year. And lastly, I was appointed to serve on the Washington State Department of L and I for Bailing Wage Advisory Committee. And our final numbers are in for twenty-twenty-one, and we closed out the year at one million eighty-six thousand dollars, which was one hundred thousand dollars over our estimate for the year for our card room revenue. So are there any questions tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. So I just would like to make one comment on the gambling tax revenues because, because we do have the final number for twenty-twenty-one, and it came in at just a little over a million dollars. And I just want to bring it to the council's attention that in two thousand and sixteen, in two thousand and sixteen was the last year that, this was the year before A L and A began operations at the at the Colossus Reservation. And so they began operations, I believe it was mid 2017. And but at 2016 was the last year that they weren't operating and the revenues to the city from the card rooms was $3,136,000. The gambling tax revenue from this card rooms in the center has diminished over $2,490,000 since ALNA began operations. I just wanted to make that note to the council this evening. So if there's no questions for Maria, we can move on. The next council, the next staff report we have for the council is the Riverside Park Naming and Mr. Jess Watson will be presenting that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I have just a quick item for you here. In your packet, you'll find a staff report that talks about the park development at the Riverside Estates subdivision. Riverside Estates is a four-phase development that's comprised of single-family and multifamily residential units. And a fourth phase, which is a city park, which is consists of just over five acres in size. The park includes a wetland area, wetland buffer, walking trail, basketball court and playground. And pursuant to the La Center Municipal Code, the city convened a park naming committee. We had a council member, council member Servini served on that. We had a planning commissioner, Sharon Elkoshire served on that. And then Dennis Hill, former council member and Luke Sassy, who represents the park owner and the builder, the developer. So we met on January 7th and several possible park names were suggested. And the consensus of the committee was to recommend the name Riverside Park to the city council for your approval. No budgetary impact related to this decision. And there is a recommended motion on the staff report and the minutes of the meeting are attached to the staff report as well. So happy to take any questions at this time.
Looks pretty cut and dry there, Jeff. Thank you.
Mayor, I moved to approve the name of Riverside Park for the city park located at Riverside Estates subdivision.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to name the Riverside Park for the city park at the Riverside Estates subdivision. Again, because we're on a virtual meeting, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yep.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yeah.
And then councilmember Servini?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thanks, Jeff. So the next staff report we have this evening is for the wastewater treatment plant membrane replacement. And Tony Cooper, the city engineer, will be presenting that this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council and citizens. So I have two reports to give tonight, the first of which is replacement of membranes for the wastewater treatment plant. So the first, first thing I'm going to do is talk about some background of the treatment plant. In 2009, the city of La Center upgraded the existing sequential batch reactor or SPR wastewater treatment plant to a membrane biological reactor, MBR type treatment plant. One of the expectations of this type of system was replacement of the membrane units approximately every 10 to 15 years. In August 2019, staff in cooperation with Kubota Membrane USA performed destructive strength testing on three random membrane cartridges. The test findings identified significant degradation of strength across all the samples and membrane replacement was highly recommended by the manufacturer within two to three years. Kubota provided a scope of work quotation for equipment and hardware purchase, freight and onsite supervision and assistance of the replacement installation of the membranes. The cost of the membranes is $607,040. The replacement of these membranes was budgeted in the amount of $745,000 designated under the sewer capital fund. The quotation is provided by Kubota and is attached. So the total cost to the sewer, the center sewer capital fund will be $607,040. And I'd just like to add that you know, Matt Jenkins and the wastewater treatment plant operations group are the ones that really did all the legwork for this. I'm just doing the reporting of what the findings are. So I'm asking for a recommendation of approval for this. Does council have any questions?
Hang on, it's good.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no questions. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacement of the sewer membrane with the, for the amount of $607,040. The award coming out in the sewer capital fund to Kubota.
Another second.
It's been moved and seconded, approved the Kubota membrane replacement purchase contract. Again, if I could get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes, very well presented.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tony. And then yes, there is one more staff report that Tony will be presenting to the council and that's for the replacement of authorization for a purchase of a new pickup truck.
Thank you, Mayor. So just some background on this one. For 2022, the city budgeted $57,500 for a pickup truck to replace the existing 2006 Chevrolet long bed pickup. This was budgeted under the Equipment Replacement Fund that is designated under the Public Works Budget. The existing 2006 Chevrolet long bed pickup has, has 98,500 miles and is not reliable to be used for more than local use. This vehicle will be used as a standby however and will be used by seasonal employees. A quote for the new 2022 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 four-wheel drive truck has been received from Bud Clary Chevrolet. The purchase was obtained through the state bid purchasing list. The cost of the vehicle has been quoted at $39,539,298, including tax. Some additional equipment can be purchased and installed by the Pub Works Department. Some of these items include all-terrain tires, an amber beacon and strobe lights, as well as some other minor items necessary to be used in the all-weather condition. Staff estimates the additional hardware will cost approximately $6,300 with tax. And the total estimated cost with additional hardware will be $46,375, excuse me. The tax quote for Bud, for Bud Clary is attached for information. Are there any questions on this at all, council?
No, Tony, just real quick, how come it was decided to go with gasoline instead of diesel? Is there a cost comparison there to fix diesel? I just know they last a lot longer.
Yeah, I don't know that they did. I can ask the operations staff how they came up with this, but they, you know, it's, it's some of it. I know that they, they work on a lot of the vehicles themselves. So I think it's a matter simplicity to be able to work on those. You know, and they use them quite a bit, you know, in all types of weather, at nighttime when they're on, on call and so they they're, they're well-used vehicles. So I'd have to get back to that, Tom.
Tony, that makes, that makes sense if they had to work on it themselves. That does save some money there. I just always look at longevity. Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So if there's no other questions. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2022 Chevrolet Silverado for Public Works with a budgeted price amount of $46,370.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of a 2022 Chevrolet Silverado with additional hardware and for the purchase price of $46,370. And could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tony. Agenda are ordinance resolutions and public hearings. We do have a public hearing this evening. It's an ordinance 2022-01, updating the La Center Municipal Code 18.6 Development Agreement and Mr. Ethan Spoo will be presenting that this evening. Ethan?
Good evening, Council, Mayor and members of the public. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Ethan Spoo. I'm the city's consulting planner with WSP as the mayor mentioned, and I'm going to be talking with you tonight about a code update to the city's municipal code, which is pertaining to development agreements. And so what you should see on screen there in front of you is my presentation. I do have a short presentation for you tonight that just walks you through what some of the code updates are and the background on this topic. And so for those of you who are new to the council, Planning Commission for a couple of years now has been working on updating the code to ensure that it's consistent and to eliminate conflicts. And then also just to make some general improvements to the code to make it function better. And so we've been bringing updates to the council in 2020 and 2021 and that'll, and that'll keep going into 2022. So you'll be hearing from me several more times this year. So next slide, please. Actually, one slide. Yeah, thank you. So as I said, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to review the changes that are proposed to chapter 1860 of the municipal code, which deals with development agreements and then to conduct a public hearing. And so the background that's key for you to know on this is that development agreements are a tool that the state of Washington makes available to local jurisdictions. What they are is, is a contract essentially that combines the city's contracting authority with its authority to regulate land use within the city boundary. And so the city would enter into a development agreement with a developer or a property owner of a piece of property to, to talk about. And then the development agreement would talk about review standards and other types of zoning and development standards that would apply to a property, sometimes phasing, timing of when improvements would be required, those types of things. So the state statute that authorizes the city to enter into development agreements is RCW 3670B. And it's in sections 170 through 210. And that's RCW 3670B is the Local Project Review Act. So development agreements are just one tool in addition to development codes that, that a city can use to regulate development. So those RCWs require, authorize the city to enter into development agreements as long as they're consistent with the city's existing development regulations. And then it also requires enforcement and specifies what vesting specifies that, that a development agreement vests a certain applicant to the code that's in place at the time that they enter into the development agreement. And it also talks about recording requirements in adopting development agreements in a public hearing. Next slide, please. So development agreements then are usually used for larger developments that have a longer build-out period. And again, one of the main points of a development agreement is to vest a development in a certain set of code standards that are in place at the time the development agreement is, is adopted. And that provides some advantages both to the city and to the developer because then they're not, then the developer's not dealing with changing regulations as the development is built out. So it provides predictability to them. They know which regulations are going to apply, even if it takes five, 10 years or more to complete their development. It's worth noting that the existing code, development agreement code provides wide latitude to modify regulations. And that's one of the things that the Planning Commission wanted to address. And so there were five work sessions with the Planning Commission and then one public hearing with them last year. There was also a separate work group that was, that was composed of two planning commissioners. Myself and city attorney Bronson that met several times to discuss how the code should be updated. Next slide, please. So just to kind of help you understand how development agreements work. Typically what happens is somebody, a developer, a property owner submits a land use application to the city. And then the city accepts that application and reviews it. You know, it could be a site plan for a commercial development or a subdivision application for a new residential development. And then the city reviews that application against the standards that are in place at the time. And then it issues a decision, which is usually either approval of that application, denial of the application or approval of the application with conditions. That's the most common one, approval with conditions of approval attached to it. And so then under that sort of standard land use review process, the developer has, depending on the type of application that they're talking about, has between two and five years to that the application is valid, that they can get their construction started and file additional construction-related applications. If you have a development agreement though, the review process works just a little bit differently. The developer or the applicant still files a, an application and the city reviews it. But instead of reviewing it just against the city's code, it's also reviewed against the provisions of the, of the development agreement that was put in place. So it's reviewed against those two things. So it's reviewed against those two things. And then the, the development agreement takes precedence. If the code and the development agreement talk about, are talking about the same thing, then the development agreement is what, what takes precedence. Next slide, please. So there are some properties in La Center that are under development agreements. Riverside is one of them. So that's the properties that are sort of south of Pacific Highway there in the northwest part of La Center that are highlighted in blue. And then to the north and east of Pacific Highway is the Highland Terrace Development. They're currently working out there, making improvements, you know, for, in anticipation of selling lots and, and building residences. So those two properties are both under development agreements. The Riverside Development Agreement talks about things like densities, park improvements, and public improvements, and when those improvements have to be provided. And the Highland Terrace Development Agreement is a little bit different. What that does is it vested the developer for a longer period of time, gave them a longer period of time to complete their development than would otherwise be allowed under standard city regulations. So that, that subdivision, Highland Terrace, was approved all the way back in 2006. You know, and it's just now being built out, and the developer, because they had a development agreement, they were allowed to extend that timeframe. So next slide, please. Another area of the city that's in a development agreement is the junction, the I-5 La Center Road Junction. South of La Center Road, there's a number of properties which are shown here in red dots that are owned by Circle C, which is the Carlson family, that are under a development agreement. And so prior to this area coming into the city, being annexed in to the city around 2011, this property owner entered into a development agreement. It was a specific type of development agreement called a pre-annexation agreement, which is what happens before a property is brought into the city. And that particular development agreement specifies what city zoning will apply to those properties after it's annexed. So I think those are the three development agreements that I know about in the city at this time. There'll be more in the future as, as the city builds out. And from those three examples, you can see that development agreements can, you know, serve a variety of purposes. Next slide, please.
Real quick, Ethan, does that, does that mean then it, it's under the 10-year time limit as, as well from the annexation? So at that point, they'd have to reapply again and then meet those, the new criteria?
So the, the development agreement at the junction was valid or is valid for a period of 15 years from 2011 until 2026. So when that development agreement expires in 2026, they'll either have to apply to have another development agreement approved, I, I guess I should say, they'll have to amend their development agreement to extend it further, or if it expires, then they would be subject to whatever regulations, you know, apply to properties there at the junction.
So from what I was reading, it looks like the term, though, in this modified one here that we're, we're looking at is now 10 years with the ability to extend the agreement for an additional 10-year. So it's no longer 15-year agreements anymore?
Well, so, yeah, that's, that's mostly correct. And so the, the code, and I'll talk about this in a second, proposes that the term of development agreements be 10 years initially, and then, and then the city would have an option to extend for another 10 years. The existing code doesn't really specify what the term is. It's just kind of wide open. But usually, in my experience, development agreements in, in most jurisdictions use a period from between 10 and 20 years. But beyond that first 10 years, a developer could, you know, the, the, the city could approve anything between 10 and 20 years. It could be 11 years, or 15 years, or 20 years. And I see that city attorney Bronson is on, sounds like he has a comment.
Well, so councilmember Strobin, I think if your question is whether this code amendment would change the effective term of the existing Circle C development agreement, the answer is no, it wouldn't. That that agreement would still have the 15-year term specified in the agreement.
Okay, good. Yeah, that, that was a concern. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry if I misunderstood your question there. So switching gears a little bit to talk about what is in the proposed code, how, how it's changing. So there's a couple of key things in this code that you'll want to take note of. One is that the code requires a public benefit. So if the city is going to enter into a development agreement with a developer, then it's also going to require a public benefit be provided by the developer. And that public benefit could take a variety of forms. There's some examples provided in the code and listed out here on the screen, things like parks and open spaces and trails, providing public streets with additional amenities such as wider sidewalks or more landscaping, providing some, a capital, a type of capital facility that's in the capital facilities plan that they wouldn't otherwise be required to provide, and some other things that are on the list that you can, that you can see. And so, you know, the, the main point here is that the existing code doesn't require the city to, to get a public benefit from the developer. So the city could enter into a development agreement and not get a specific benefit from it. And then the new code also proposes that, or excuse me, includes criteria that those benefits be of equal or greater value than the modifications that are proposed in the development agreement. And I'll talk about modifications here in a second. So the developer has to propose something that's roughly proportional to what they're asking for from the city. It's kind of the simple way to state that. It doesn't have to be monetary. It doesn't have to be in-kind. For instance, if somebody wanted to, if, if a developer was entering into a development agreement to remove the requirement for a street connection, in return for that, it might provide more park and open spaces. So that's not an in-kind requirement. And then, you know, the city council will have the ultimate discretion in terms of determining what's of equal value and what's appropriate to, to require the developer to, to do. Next slide, please. So the code continues to allow for developers to make modifications to the city's development standards, and that's a pretty common thing in these codes across jurisdictions that they allow for some type of modifications. It was important to the Planning Commission to further specify what those modifications could be, because the existing code is really pretty wide open, and you can almost modify anything. So the city, so the Planning Commission wanted to define that a little bit better. And so you can make, you can propose to make a modification to any development standard as long as it's consistent with the things that are listed there in the code. And that includes that any land uses have to be uses that are permitted or conditional within that applicable zone. We talked about the term already, the 10 years plus an additional 10 years, that it can be extended. Density can be increased in a single phase of a development project by 20% in the MDR 16 Zone, which is the city's medium-density residential zone. But the overall density for the area within the development has to remain, has to remain the same. So in essence, you'd be increasing density in one phase and decreasing it in another phase, but that gives some flexibility. Building an impervious surface coverage can be up to 60% in the LDR 7.5 Zone, which is the city's low-density residential zone. That gives additional flexibility again, because the, the city's code right now sets building coverage at 35% and impervious surface coverage at 50%. And then height can be, building height can be increased in the junction plan zone. Next slide, please.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is kind of back a couple slides, but people were kind of talking. I didn't really have a chance. But you mentioned that the Carlson property, that since it's been annexed, it has only certain types of use put on it or that can be built. Can you explain more what they can? Because that's obviously a really important piece of La Center. And I'm just curious, like, what are some of those restrictions that they're under?
Well, so prior to annexation, when they entered into a development agreement, the city had some different zoning at that time. There was a C2 community commercial zone, and there was also a light industrial zone. Since that time, the city has gotten rid of those zones and replaced it with the junction plan zone. But under that development agreement, they could, you know, depending on which specific property you're talking about, they could do sort of more traditional commercial development, you know, that you might see more typically at freeway interchanges with commercial building, large commercial buildings and parking in front, and then light industries such as warehousing, perhaps light manufacturing uses. So that's what they can do under the development agreement. If they didn't have the development agreement in place, they'd be required to comply with the city's junction plan zone, which is more of a mixed-use concept where you would have commercial or, commercial on the ground floor with office or residential above it. So it's really kind of a totally different, different concept. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, I mean, I've, yes, thank you for answering the question.
Okay. And so that modifications code section also specifies which code sections you cannot modify, and those are listed there on the screen. And again, that's a change from the existing code where it's pretty wide open. So the things you can't modify include density in this, in the medium-density residential zone, maximum height. Sorry, let me go back one. You can't modify density except in the MDR 16 Zone, and you can't modify height except in the junction plan zone. You can't modify the city's park and open spaces requirements or requirements of its sensitive utility corridor standards, its critical areas ordinance, which is the ordinance that protects wetlands and habitat and, and streams and steep slopes. You can't modify the provisions of the city's shoreline master program, which is regulations that apply near the East Fork of the Lewis River. You can't modify the provisions of this, the city's code that pertain to SEPA, and SEPA is the State Environmental Policy Act. And then the others are the city's stormwater standards, archaeological standards, or its building code requirements. So there's a fairly significant list there of things you can't modify, but at the same time, there's many things that you can modify under development agreement. Next, next slide, please. And there's, so there's a couple, there's, there's another, there's a new section that specifies submittal requirements, and so that's not a section that's in the existing code. And so that'll list out what people have to submit in order to apply for, for a development agreement with the city. And then, lastly, the new code will specify that development agreements have to be adopted by council. The existing code allows for them to be adopted by council or, or by the hearing examiner. And so this will just limit it to council. We think it's appropriate because these type of agreements are usually, usually affecting large properties, have a lot of impact on the city over many years. And so there's important policy issues that the city council needs to consider when it enters, when the city enters into a development agreement. Next slide, please. So our recommendation then for you tonight is to conduct a public hearing and accept any public comments, and then approve the proposed revisions to that chapter of the municipal code, LCMC 1860. There's a specific motion there for you on the screen for, for a recommendation of approval, if, if you care to use that. And then with that, I will take any questions, any other questions that you might have.
I don't necessarily, but I was just wondering, would this be something where we might want to take a little bit more time on it to maybe just further educate and kind of look into these subject matters a little bit more?
I mean, certainly that's possible, and I'll let the mayor comment on that a little bit. But if, you know, if you wanted a workshop on this, then I'd certainly be willing to do that. I'd probably want to, you know, make sure that city attorney Bronson was involved in that.
So councilmember Boyle, what, do you have anything specific concerns that you have just after listening to, to the presentation? Or what, what, what are you hoping to, in a work session or giving it more time?
Nothing really, or give it more time, just to get a little bit further educated. I mean, I, I think a lot of this stuff can, you know, go above and beyond a normal person's understanding. So I mean, just maybe to get a chance to get, how this is going to affect the current zoning and, and ordinances with zoning.
One thing I should mention, just in response to that, is these are optional agreements that a developer enters into with the city. And so they would propose, come to the city and propose that they enter into a development agreement, and then the city would work with them to negotiate what the specifics are in that development agreement. So it's not outright changing any zoning that the city has right now until the developer optionally enters into that, that type of agreement. And then anytime the city enters into that agreement, it would come before the city council, and we would talk to you about what is in that agreement and how it would, how it changes, how, how it would change what would normally apply to that given piece of property.
Okay, thank you. I think that actually clears it up quite a bit, just kind of puts things a little bit more in a perspective.
Okay. So are there any other questions for Ethan from the council this evening before I open up the public hearing? So counsel, I know this is the first time we've actually gone through a public hearing. So again, pretty much the procedure here is that after the city staff presents the materials and before I open up the public hearing, there's an opportunity to ask questions or have discussion amongst yourselves. So if any of the council members would like to comment, have a discussion amongst themselves, this would be now, now would be the time to do that. uh this would be now, now would be the time to do that. If there's no questions or further discussion among the council members, I'll open up the public hearing. Uh if there's anybody uh attending the meeting this evening that would like to comment on the um the ordinance, that's their opportunity. After those comments are completed, then I will close the public hearing, go back to the council for further discussion and or questions of city staff. So I just wanted to make that clear so that, again, there will be another opportunity to revisit this after I open and close the public hearing. Are there any questions on that, council?
No, mayor.
Okay. So um here in that there's, seeing that there's no other discussion, I will at seven forty-one open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in attendance this evening that would like to um comment on the presentation by Ethan Spoo or on the ordinance, now would be the time to do that. Uh if you could please uh state your name and address before you give us your comment. And I will open it up now for a public comment.
Uh three, five, nine, one, five, Northwest Jenny Creek Road, La Center. What time did this get added on to tonight's agenda is one of the things I'd like to know. So I don't think it was on there at noon today, was it? I I'm don't know if I'm for, I don't, I don't know if I'm pro or or anti on this thing. But I would have, I I'm a little bit. I can't find the right word. Perplexed would be a, would be a good term in that I had asked both Mr. Spoo and uh and the and the and the clerk to be kept up to speed on any and all correspondence that would have impacts on the uh Carlson investment properties out there, which this obviously does. It's impactful. Whether it's positive or negative, I don't know. But uh I seem to have fallen onto some deaf tears, and I don't think uh the clerk was very nice and and gave, sent me a long detailed letter about uh putting in for a public records request, which frankly was as as a representative of the of the body, the the and uh part owner. It's, doesn't seem like this is uh, that was the correct way to go. But anyway, first question is, what time did this get put up? Because I, I think I reviewed the agenda at noon before I went and did things. And I come back and this is all all the way up here. I'd like to have a little more time to review this so I could say, yeah, I'm I'm all, go get them tiger. I think it's great, or no, it's a bunch of malarkey. So uh I guess that's my comment on it.
Okay, appreciate that. My understanding that this has been noticed now since uh last Thursday, and then it's also noticed through a public hearing notice.
We never heard a word. We never were to hear a word. This first, I saw it at six thirty tonight, Greg.
Okay, I understand, but clerk, uh Maria, can you uh explain when this was actually put on the agenda and how long it's been up?
Absolutely. So it, we had the, I believe it's a two-week notice in the newspaper. Is that correct, Ethan? So it's been in the newspaper for two weeks. And then um the agenda was posted outside of our city offices last week, as well as this was put on the agenda last week. And then um the documents were also added last week. I do believe uh the deputy city clerk let me know today there was a save issue, so it was on there. And then um the the documents went away. And then I believe on Monday, we updated it again and those got added back on there. So I'm, I'm sorry, Skip. I'm not sure what you were looking at, but they have been on there this week.
The agenda for tonight's meeting. That was up on online.
Correct, yes.
That's what I was looking at, and it wasn't on there.
I'm sorry, but they, it it has been on there.
We received an updated agenda, so I don't understand why you're saying that it has been on there because we all received an updated one a few hours before council, so.
Well, it was because the, those documents had, they were on there last week. And then she noticed on Monday that they had disappeared. And so they, um so I was just making sure because I I know that some people look at it early and then don't look at it again. And I wanted to make sure that everybody was looking at it before the meeting. So that you had the most update. And we also had um Tony's staff report about the vehicle that got added.
Well, that was on there at noon when I looked at the agenda for tonight, but this wasn't.
All documents are always available at City Hall if anyone ever wants to come in and look at them.
Yeah. Okay.
Eric, can I? I just want to point out that there is in the agenda packet um a public notice, a copy of the public notice that was provided um to the newspaper um that was provided on on January twelfth. Um so it's been in the newspaper since January twelfth.
Okay, all right.
Well, again, it it wasn't on there when I reviewed the agenda at no later than noon or one o'clock, noon today. And perhaps it's my equipment is, I suppose. I don't know. But I'd like to be able to review this stuff. And I don't think getting a, an actual uh notice as as property owner on impactful stuff. I don't think that's asking too much either.
Okay. Any other comments this evening?
I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Carlson.
Okay, uh Councilmember Fox, again, after we close the public hearing, there'll be an opportunity for the council members to have a discussion and comment. So uh right now, the public hearing is for people that want to participate. So uh Mr. Carlson, if you have anything else to add?
I think I'm, again, I I can't say if I'm pro or anti, but I'm, procedure is everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone, any other uh person attending the meeting this evening?
Thirteen sixteen West Alder Place, La Center. Um in listening to Ethan's presentation, um and and part of that was showing Skip's properties up at the junction. And again, I may be wrong here, but my understanding of listening to what uh Ethan shared is that those properties up there that were identified with the red dot are already under a a development agreement. And this would not impact that at all, I believe. My understanding is that this would not be impacted uh impact those, uh that existing agreement that the Carlsons currently have on their property. Can you correct me on that, or is that not true?
That's, that's correct, um Mr. Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment this evening for the ordinance in front of us? Okay, so at seven, not hearing anyone else trying to make a comment. I will close the public hearing at seven fifty. Again, I will open it up back to the city council for further discussion or any questions that you may have with staff or discussion you want to have amongst yourselves regarding this ordinance.
I'm not opposed to uh holding until the next council meeting to place a vote on something like this, at least to give the um property owners a little bit more time to read through um to to see how this is going to affect them. Uh we definitely want to work with the property owners as much as possible um because of the development uh that is important to the city. So I I'm not opposed to holding off uh until the next meeting. I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are.
I'll jump on board with that as well.
Yeah, I'm good with that as well.
Okay.
It sounds to me like, like the ordinance was drafted often best practices in what is probably most beneficial to both the property owners and the and the city. So I'm fine whether we vote tonight or give the uh, give the citizens a little bit more time to review it.
Okay, so now I have a question for the city attorney. With those comments, Bronson, do we hold the public hearing open and just defer it to the next city council meeting? Or how how would be the best way to proceed if um we were to not take an action this evening?
Uh the, the council really uh I think has two options at this point. Uh if you want to continue consideration of this uh proposal ordinance amendment, uh you can continue the hearing until our next council meeting and leave public comment open. Or the alternative would be to continue the hearing for council deliberation, but close public testimony tonight. From what I've heard from the council's discussion, uh the desire is to give the public property owners more time to spend reviewing the materials. And uh would probably be most appropriate to continue and leave public comment open.
Okay. Okay. And do we need a a motion to do that, Bronson, or do we just uh end the public hearing at this point?
Uh so I've got a new laptop a couple of days ago, and I'm struggling a little bit with the camera function. But yes, you you do need a motion to continue hearing uh as the public comment open.
Make a motion to continue this evening's discussion and public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh one. Allow additional time for the public to provide their comments.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue uh ordinance to a date certain, which would be our next city council meeting, February ninth. And leave it, uh leave the public hearing open until February ninth and for continuance of the discussion. It's been moved to second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, council. So we will have this back on the agenda at the February sixth, February ninth meeting.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
So that concludes our uh agenda for this evening. If there's no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great, blessed evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.